Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um. So this is the item that we refer to as the special meeting. And this is a public executive session. To consider an act upon proposed revenues and expenditures in the amount of eight million six seventy six four thirty two for the Water Pollution Control Authority for the fiscal year of July one, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, I'll open it up.
So I'm happy to, Frank, if it's helpful or if you want to, I took notes on what was said and then had a chance to again reiterate with the vice chair and the chair afterwards. Is it helpful to talk about why the increases? Tom, you weren't there, sort of what accounts for the budget change? And then I can talk to you about what happened at the meeting or what's the most helpful?
If it's, if it's helpful to, to the board, I can, um, you know, the explanation I gave them today was the explanation I ran through with you on, um, I think it was Friday, right, where we went over the WPCA? Or maybe it was earlier than that, I forget. But, um, but I gave them the same explanation. So, you know, I can go over it again, but, but nothing would change from, from what I explained to you unless Nancy, you heard anything differently.
The only, and no, I don't, I, it was as explained today was as, you know, as I understood it yesterday, or was it yesterday? The one question that I just didn't understand was the authorized appropriation increase for the, was it an accounting change? Jared wanted to reflect the fund increases through the department. Can you just talk about that a little bit? Because I didn't understand that piece of it. And maybe it was just an organization thing. And, and again, I had briefly gotten some notes from the vice chair as well and just didn't understand that piece of it.
Yes, so that just be, so every fund that we budget for has to balance. So the revenues have to equal the expenditures. So in prior years, if the revenues exceeded the, the revenues and there was, you know, essentially a surplus, hold on for a second, hold on. If the revenues exceeded the, um, the expenditures, then we would just lower the revenues to, to equal the expenditures. This year, I basically said, you know, as a contribution to fund balance, it's more transparent to say, just increase the expenditures to equal the revenues because the, the projected revenues are predominantly current sewer user fees and those are based on volume and, and a rate. So, you know, the, they're very confident that they can get those. So it's basically kind of budgeting. It's the budgeted surplus essentially is, is what that is. But it's just an accounting methodology change.
Nancy, it's kind of like in the general fund when we used to budget the contribution to the general fund at the end of every year, we said, we're going to contribute so much. This is their contribution to their fund balance at the end of every year.
Yep.
Think of it that way. It's actually, it's actually, I like this, Frank. It's a good thought because it's more transparent. Right? In the past, it just used to fall through and just used to go to their surplus. Here, you're actually calling it out. So I kind of like this. Actually.
And, and sort of physically moving it, if you will.
Right.
So I guess for discussion purposes, Tom, you should know that the board voted unanimously to support the budget. That being said, I have, I had my reservations going in. I still have my reservations. I will say that historically, when I have voted yes or no, I've always been confident in that decision. I feel really unconfident. I felt unconfident going into the budget process. I had asked the question, as I had said publicly, of the town attorney who assures me, and I respect the opinion and appreciate the opinion. He assures me that what is happening with the investigation and the alleged misuse has no bearing on operations. Okay, I accept that that's, you know, his, his determination. I understand that we have to flush toilets and we have to go about the business of keeping things moving. But, you know, we're voting on a budget that in five months is not going to have any bearing on reality. And we are undertaking this audit. Uh, it's, we haven't started it, but it was agreed and the, there was unanimous support for the WPCA to, to help and really sort of contribute equally, if not more in terms of, um, we have great subject matter expertise from the commissioners. One who, one commissioner in particular who does this for a living, um, or has done this for a living in the past. And so I feel that that's going to reveal some important answers. And it's very hard for me to accept that what is happening organizationally is not going to impact operations in a great way. And I just don't feel secure in my knowledge. And as I said, I felt pretty shaky about it before. I did vote for it at the WPCA table. So I want, I don't want to misrepresent that. But in taking time away from it, it's not my instinct and I, I'm not supportive of it now because I just don't feel, I just don't feel good about it. If we were to say it's subject to review, I might be able to get my head around it. But as it stands, I just, I, I don't feel good about being able to support it.
Can I ask a few questions on this just to get some clarity? If, if you don't mind, madam? First select one.
Sure.
Okay. So my understanding is there's a few things going on. Number one, we can't talk about now, but we'll, hopefully we'll get kind of a briefing in executive session next week. Related to some issues that were in the press over the weekend. Okay. I, I, the second one is kind of the overall administration of the WPCA in this thought by the administration that they want to do what they're referring to as an operational audit or review, which is independent from a financial audit. Do, do I understand that correctly?
Did you pull in today for the WPCA, uh, Tom? I couldn't tell who was on. I mean, there was a lot of people on. I wasn't sure if you, uh, took the opportunity.
I couldn't because I had a business commitment that on such short notice I couldn't get out of. But I, my understanding is it's an operational audit, not a financial audit. Correct?
Um, it's an audit. Uh, we had a dialogue during the meeting, uh, two of the members of the commission who have a bit of expertise in this area as well as, uh, Mr. McCarthy agreed to assist with our, um, efforts to pull together consultants and, um, I think it's, his name is Matt. Is it Matt or Matt? Matt Chris is the other one. Matt has a lot of, um, this is what he does, I guess, for a living. So he has a lot of good experience in this area. He's gonna uh, come in and speak with us because we have been looking at consultants who basically look at WPC.
Right.
A's and so we get a better sense of what, um, but really it's more like a, an audit to just look at is our WPCA? And we talked about this a lot during this meeting today. Is, you know, ours, is our WPC running like other WPCAs? Is it following best practices? So on and so forth. And as I mentioned during our public meetings together here on Board of Selectmen and again today at the WPCA meeting, you know, whatever, uh, comes out of that, well, we will deal with it. If it's a sixty day, thirty day and ninety day review. If it's past the time of the budget cycle, we, and it's a request for additional staffing for specific controls or oversight, uh, we will then make a request as we have in the past for a transfer from the Board of Finance. And if it happens during the budget season, we will ask for that, um, at that time. I'm assuming it probably would be longer than that, but I don't really know. Um, so that's kind of where we are.
So a couple of things. Number one, then that's what I would call an operational audit, not a financial audit. It's not being done by an independent audit firm. It's being done by, uh, independent experts in the management and operation of a WPCA operation. Right? And Nancy, I, I saw your hand there. I don't know if you wanted to say something.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify, um, I think that they're, not that it's cross purposes because it hasn't been discussed, but I think in terms of the WPCA, I think it's still outstanding in terms of what the commission believes the scope of work should be. And I won't speak on behalf of the body because there was some discussion, we started to have that discussion. But I would argue that some people think it needs to have a robust financial audit and, um, operations. And so I think that that is still to be determined based on, you know, and I use the phrase from the sublime to the ridiculous because we could spend X amount or, you know, lots of amounts to, based on the scope of the work and, um, which is why I think it's good to have three members of the commission, including the one with the, the subject matter expertise participating. Even, you know, from, for the whole scope of the project and process, you know, from picking who that company is going to be, determining what the scope is and so on. Including carrying out, you know, recommendations and best, which of the best recommendations from that audit? What the, how to, how to interpret the findings?
Agreed.
So I think, um, a couple of things on this. Number one, an operational audit and/or a financial audit are not going to be done within the timeframe of this budget cycle. It's just, um, that, that's kind of my, my world that I live in. And it's just by the time you go out, you find the people, they do their information gathering, they conduct interviews, they review operations. It's not going to happen in the scope of the budget process. It's just, that's my professional opinion based on my, my private work. So then we're stuck with what should the budget be? Because we have to pass a budget in order to move forward here. This budget is not materially different from prior year's budgets. Is that correct, Frank?
That's correct.
And we do have the ability, not, not our board, but the Board of Finance has the, I believe, right, under WPCA, the Board of Finance and, and the like have the ability to transfer funds within the operate, within that budget. So for example, Nancy, if they came back and say, uh, we don't need, I, and I make this up, right? We don't need this amount in consulting or we don't need this amount in this, but we need it in, uh, another person, just to use the example that you laid out. They can actually make that transfer subsequent to the, um, budget process. I think in fact, they did that earlier this year as it related to, um, one of the departments that we talked about during the budget process. I think it was human resources. So there is the ability to transfer funds under Board of Finance auspices between specific aligned items within the departmental budget. So really, what we're voting for on this, given the unknowns, which is the operational audit and the financial audit, what we're really, uh, voting on is the total budget in WPCA. And saying you're only allowed to submit, you're only allowed to spend up to that amount. Right? In addition, we've got more than enough time if we approve it now and it moves forward before this budget actually takes effect because it doesn't take effect to July first. So if we hustle with the operational office, I still think it'll be tight. But if you hustle, hustle with the operational audit, you hustle if there's a financial audit. You could do those transfers in the June timeframe or so and have that revised budget for July first, moving forward. And I would assume, and I would ask, that this operational audit, and if in fact it does entail a financial audit, be submitted not just to the WPCA board, but directly to our board and Nancy, as you as our representative on the WPCA, as well as to the Board of Finance, as well as if they like, I won't speak to, for the RTM. But that it get, it gets submitted to those bodies. So by the time it goes into effect on July first, there's a full vetting amongst the town bodies and probably a better vetting than there's been since I've been involved in town government of the operations of the WPCA. And then we can move forward with that July first date, assuming, and I just want to confirm this, Nancy, I, I thought you said that, or was this unanimous unanimously approved by the WPCA board at this point in time?
It was. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. So from that perspective, I, and, and I'm dealing largely, I understand the concern, but I'm dealing largely with the fact that I don't think we're going to have any better answers in a short period of time during this budget process. And I think we just need to lay out what the next steps are as it relates to this operational audit and the financial audit and the scope of that and reporting back so we can get it done by the time the budget actually takes effect. That, that's kind of where I'm at.
Thanks, Tom. Maybe that's what makes sense. Go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm looking here and it's in, in increase in one point eight million, almost one point eight million or twenty six percent. And I guess if there was a way, because again, I agree that, you know, we can't stop, the plant has to run, you know, it, there are things that have to function. But for instance, you know, when you look at the second digester repair, you know, there's allocations there. Right now we're focused on fixing the first one. Is that an expense that we can take away? Can we take away anything that's like sort of considered extra? And I understand that philosophically, and we spent a lot of time talking about this at the WPCA, like some municipalities do choose not to like clean their digesters and that they do wait for things. And I know that that may not be the approach that this administration wants to take, which I respect. But to buy ourselves time, you know, that is a, you know, a, a large expense. And then we have a hundred and forty five dollars, forty five thousand dollars in, in special supplies. Well, there is ostensibly, you could argue like we're cleaning, that we're fixing the first one. So I'm just wondering, is there a way to put forward the, and, and understanding that some of this is due to contractual obligations and, and bond principle and all the things that we can't change. But.
Can I, I'm, no, it's my fault. Can I interrupt just for a second with a question?
Sure.
To what you said, I'm, I'm going to ask Nancy if it's okay. You were in a role. You said the increase, Nancy. How much of that though was the contribution to the, to the fund?
Frank, can you parse that out?
Yeah, of that one, of that, I think it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand. I'm, I'm rounding, but it's around there.
I, I'm sorry, Nancy. I just wanted to, because I was listening to you and I was trying to, to focus here. So thank you.
Yeah. I mean, as I said, I, I just feel, I just don't feel comfortable and I understand it, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm sort of torn because I really do appreciate that the plant has to operate and we have to do all the things, like people need to be able to flush their toilets. So I go back to that. But I, I'm just, and I go back honestly, when I think of it, and I hate to bring up something that's like a sore subject, but back when I was on the RTM and the former administration and we were voting on a contract to, to push through something and we were in an investigation with the Julians and then we all know what happened there. And I fortunately abstained because something didn't feel right. And, and I'm not saying that this is like apples to apples, but it, it was like I went with my instinct because it didn't feel right then. And it just for me, something's not feeling right. And I, I don't know what the solution is, given what I'm saying on the other hand, which is I know toilets have to flush. So, and I did vote for it around the WPCA table for full, you know, for transparency. So I, I'm not afraid to say that I felt one way or not that I felt one way because I was still uncomfortable. I voted one way and, and with some hours distance, I, I come to this table with just feeling differently.
Can I just make a clarification on, on the budget piece?
With some info on the increase in that. So please do.
Yeah. So, so I, I just wanted to make a clarification about that, you know, the appropriation to fund balance or the contribution of fund balance. That's budgeted in there as an expenditure. Um, so, um, you know, I, I heard Nancy say, you know, you know, could we afford to, you know, take out the money for the second digester? Um, you know, if you, if, if it, we really needed to, and if the boards, uh, wanted to, they, they could also make a transfer out of the contribution to fund balance for the, for the digest, you know, like they can, they could take money out of that contribution if, if they needed some kind of, um, stopgap. So that's, that's, uh, that, that money can be used, um, even though it's appropriated for that purpose now. It could be used if, if need be. So I just wanted to point to, uh, clarify on that.
Thank you, Frank. You're, you're a thousand percent right. I hope it never comes to that because I think building up that fund balances is the prudent thing to do, but you're, the point is very well noted. What's the other increases in the expenses? You know, we, Nancy brings up one point eight, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand was that? What are the other increases that, that are about a million?
Yes, I just have to see if I have.
Do you want me to read my notes? Or Joe's here? Joe, my notes come from Joe, so I'm happy to represent if it's, since there's a public comment, but I don't know.
If anybody has any, I, I haven't right here. I was able to, to pull them up. So, um, about a hundred and forty thousand is, is due to, um, an increase in just contracts. You know, P to the DPW. Eighty nine thousand five hundred, um, increasing contractual property services. The four hundred and twenty thousand is, um, an increase, the, the second digester. And two hundred and fifty thousand is, um, an increase for debt service. So of the, of, of the million, you know, two fifty, four twenty, one fifty and eighty nine five, those are kind of all, uh, just contractual things.
And one forty five for, for special supplies.
One forty five, I didn't, um, I'd have, I'd, I'd have to go back and check that. I could take a look at that. It's correct.
It's, it's, it was under special department supplies.
So really what we're talking about here, Nancy, is the special supplies and the four fifty for the digester. Because the rest of it is really, as you said, and I hate to put it like this, but it's move forward slash contractual costs. And the one thing we do know from our discussions of WPCA to date i- is the fact that our belief, not necessarily in the operating budget, but in total over the last couple of decades, it's been under invested in, and that's part of the reason we're having this problem right now. Right? So I go back to if we get the information by the, by the end of the, um, fiscal year. The other thing that can happen is the boards can go back and say, don't spend that money or put more of that money. Make a transfer and say, we don't need to do this now. Make a transfer of more than the money. Do, do what Frank said. Make, uh, in reverse, make a transfer of more of the money towards the fund balance, which we know they need because they're under funding the fund balance. Right? As, as Joe helped put together a schedule that was presented at a prior meeting that said, we're overusing the fund balance by several million dollars in the next six to eight years and that fund balance is going to disappear. So you could actually say, Frank, in reverse, right now you have seven fifty, go to it. We go through, we do this operational audit. To Nancy's point, they come back and say, you don't need to do this, this, and this right now. We can take those monies and say, and as opposed to seven fifty, we can say, take another quarter of a million and throw it towards the, or not us, but the Board of Finance can say towards the fund balance. Correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that would work also.
So Matt, so Nancy, that'd be a way to kind of ally your fear of it being over expensed because it would go to fund balance, which is something that we need in this area.
Yeah. And I, I go back to this and it's, it's an, it's a phrase or an expression I use often, like to me, it's as much philosophical quandary as it is, uh, one of, of the, of the way that this would be managed from a financial perspective. And I think about what you were saying yesterday with the police department and overtime and I, and I appreciated the point you were making. You know, for me, when something doesn't seem right, I don't necessarily want to be throwing extra money at it, you know, without it being, so I understand that there's still stopgap opportunities. Would I feel better if this was literally the barest of bone's budget where it was just to cover the cost of doing business? I would. And, and maybe just, yeah, even to make a point, you know, of we have to stop this. We need to like stop whatever sort of bleeding is going on, um, because we all agree it's, it's not functioning well. So, you know, maybe my vote will be symbolic here, but it also just feels like the right right way forward for me.
Yeah, I don't want to, I'm, look, I'm not trying to, um, change your vote and, 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 um, I'm, I'm as much, um, negotiating with myself out loud, right, as anything else and thinking out loud just because I think it helps further the dialogue. Kind of the difference here i- in what I'm seeing is this is an area that all the projections we have and all the information we've come across. And by the way, one of the reasons I think the administration has come forward and said, we need an operational audit and things like that might be what's going on independently, right? That we know about. But it's also the fact that we know we've under invested in this area over the last many, many years and that under investment in that area has caused the issues we're having from financing projects going forward. So as much as I'd love to save money more, more than most, you know, I sit here and I say, this is an area where I think we might be penny wise and pound foolish given the large projects that confront us. And, you know, the three things I'm focused on are, we can't get the operational budget and we can't get the operational audit done in time. If you do a financial audit, you're not going to get that done in time for, for the actual votes. You will probably get them in time to actually implement them. And we have an opportunity, if the reporting is right, to implement them for the budget cycle that begins July first. And that we know we need the money in that fund anyway, in order to fund the myriad of projects that have already been identified on a go forward basis.
So what I would, I'll just jump in and say what I said today, uh, during the WPCA meeting was, um, you know, there was a number of reasons why we wanted to do this audit. Um, and I, what, how I expressed it today, Tom, at the meeting, uh, because you weren't there, um, it was that when we walked in, uh, to this, to the town hall a little over three years ago, literally there were, you know, fires burning everywhere, problems everywhere. And, you know, four months in, we had a global pandemic and, you know, just so many broken things. So, you know, we just started fixing as much as we could. You know, I like to remind people that, you know, the day I walked in and got sworn in, there were notices of violation from the Department of Environmental Protection certified letters sitting on the desk that were not opened, um, from October. So, you know, two weeks in, we were up at the DEP, uh, finding out about all the stuff. So, so we have done, you know, um, and I can just tell you that we have worked extraordinarily hard to clean up every single thing, uh, as we've moved forward. And, you know, changing things and reorganizing things and fixing things takes a lot of time and a lot of work. And, you know, just knowledge, just basic knowledge, um, you know, that WPCAs are kind of a funky thing in other towns too. You know, you learn this and I said this today during the meeting, talking to other chief elected officials in towns when we have our MetroCog meetings or we have these meetings that WPCAs are kind of like these separate entities, but they're so large, they have giant budgets. And they're all kind of maneuver, they all act in different ways and our charter is really unclear about how it's supposed to act in our town. And frankly, I don't think anybody really ever paid attention to it, um, for many, many, many years. And so, you know, in, in, in the vein of what we've been doing since we've come in, you know, let's fix this, let's fix that. And finally, we're like, oh, this, you know, this needs something else. This needs a look and see if it's operating. And so I, I referred to it as what we did with conservation when, you know, we lost, you know, the director due to the criminal case, and we just wanted to do a revamping of there. We brought SLR in, an environmental company that was a little different. They actually helped us assist with the running of the department and also they were reviewing everything happening there and they, you know, they identified a lot of things that needed to be fixed in that department that weren't operating correctly. And it was very good because once we went through the process of hiring a new director, you know, he had that wealth of information and those recommendations to be able to use to help him. And so, you know, it's just one more thing. You know, listen, I, you know, we've, we've, we've come across a lot of stuff over the last three years and it just, just never ends. So I'm really hopeful that this audit will be helpful in allowing us to have a better understanding of what's going on, how it should, and let's keep moving. But, I mean, frankly, I don't know how you, I, I mean, listen, we put that money in there to clean that digester, that's for cleaning and maintenance. Everybody is aware that those digesters have not been cleaned for a really, really long time. Now, regardless, the other one broke, it caused extreme havoc in our town. It's not appropriate. And to me, it makes total sense to put, we put the three seventy five in there to clean and, and provide proper maintenance for that other digester. So there is people who live very close to that thing, and that has been impacting people in a big way. And has caused a lot of man hours from our health department, from our WPCA staff, from WDPW, from everybody. So, and from my office. So I think that's money well spent. I will never say that we shouldn't properly maintain things and shouldn't make sure they're running in, in an appropriate way, especially something as important as as a wastewater treatment facilities digester. So, um, listen, I, you know, I, we've had this, you guys, we've had this budget for a time now. Nancy serves on this commission. She's supposed to be our liaison for the board. I, the board, the board just voted unanimously to pass this budget. You know, we have, the Board of Finance is picking up in month of March. We have a lot of pressing needs going on, as you know, Penfield Pavilion still have Phil Pyle and it's, so I think we should pass this budget and let's see how it goes with the audit. I was very grateful today that three members of the commission stepped up to assist us because I think they have good knowledge and let's fix this problem and move on. I, you know, I, listen, if Nancy, if you don't want to vote for the budget, I mean, you know, that kind of leaves the responsibility to Tom and I because it has to pass. Because there are people who work there and there is an operation that needs to be funded. So, I mean, that's really all I have to say on.
Okay, but when you, you say it like that, it's not allowing for an honest conversation when you say it has to pass. I mean, you're making it sound like there are no exceptions, that what we've been, what you've passed down to us, there's, there's no room for conversation. So I, I really don't appreciate.
No, there's absolutely room for conversation. We've had long hearings and honestly, this is a special meeting and if you want to make a adjustment to the budget or a motion to adjust, to cut, to to add, I mean, really, it's
I, I get that. I was first trying, I was first trying to have a real conversation about my concerns and being the liaison to the board is exactly why I take it so seriously. I am not representing, I, I haven't spoken individually to every board member. They did vote for it, but I can tell you that many are also share my concerns in terms of the WPCA has sort of been an abandoned orphan, not reporting to anyone for a long time. So I, I do, because I am the liaison, nobody appreciates this more than me. I have put it out there that I would be more comfortable. I have not yet made a motion, which I will do, and thank you for reminding me that that's my, within my purview and my right to do, which I will do, but I first wanted to have the conversation. So Tom, who was working and could not attend the meeting earlier, could understand some of the nuance. So, you know, respectfully, I imagine that there are alternatives if this particular budget does not pass. So to say that it has to pass and the responsibility is is just on the two of you, I really don't appreciate because the responsibility on all of us is to interrogate the process and to make sure that all of our questions and concerns are addressed. And mine aren't being addressed in part because I don't know the details of an investigation, nor do I want to impede in the ability to have one be done successfully. So respectfully, I will make a motion to reduce the budget. And again, I'd have to do the math, but to, you know, Frank, if you could help me before I make the motion on what it is that is really just about the contractual operations and the cost of keeping for now. And I don't argue that it's a good decision to clean the digester. That's not what I'm saying. Because I agree, I, I know the impact that it's had on the community and I appreciate the time, the energy. You know, everyone's working hard. So it's not about that and we don't want that to happen again. But could we put a pin in that for this minute? Because when you have somebody who's, when there isn't someone overseeing and we don't have a department, a town lia- liaison advocating, but there's so many missing pieces to to, to having this budget be advocated for and defended. So Frank, back to my question, if you could let me know what a reduction would be, where it really is just covering contractual obligations, you know, all the bare bones to keep the plant running without, you know, what I'll call the extras. And please don't take it out of context. I'm not saying we shouldn't clean, but the extras for now.
Um, that would be a hard, that would just be, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that on the spot just because, you know, I, I hit the highlight, but like I said, there are other.
Okay.
There are offsets in there.
Back of napkin math, it's for the digester, we're looking at four hundred thousand?
Yeah. So if you wanted, the increase in that line, I attributed the, the digester to the whole increase that line. It's, it's around. Yeah, the four hundred thousand.
And then we have special supplies at a hundred and sixty five?
Special departmental supplies. Oh yeah, you're saying the increase. Okay.
What I'm, what I'm trying to do is not impede in the administration's ability to.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just doing the math.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I wonder in the way that we did yesterday when the board event was present and the police department and fire department, we have the vice chair of WPCA here. If, if there's anything he wanted to add to this conversation, I'd really welcome his participation to, to see if we couldn't, you know, get to a.
Great question. Well, well, Nancy, well, well, Frank is doing the math. Okay. And, and you, you know, I'll obviously cede the floor back to you so you can do your motion after. Mr. Davido, I see you're on the line. How are you, sir?
I'm good. Thank you, Tom.
Good. Quick question for you. Can you talk a little bit about this budget from your perspective, just while I've got you here? Because I've worked with you for many, many years and, and respect your opinion greatly on these matters. So I'd, I'd like to hear a little bit from you.
Hey, uh, basically this is a budget that's consistent with years past budgets. Uh, there are some numbers in here that drove it up to 26%, but I can isolate those numbers. What, what people keep missing is we've got redemption and interest on the bonds now. Of course, we completed that capital project, which was the Eastern Pump Station and the Force Main. Three seventy five, obviously, we keep talking about it and ground it to four hundred is the digester. The special apartment supplies are actually real. We've been, we've got complaints, not only from the digester, but from around town at the pump stations. And we've been using more chemicals. The polymers are up 76%. The meth, methanol, the methanol costs are up 13%. And the UV process that we use in the plant is up 43%. So those are real numbers.
Joe, for, for the uninitiated, right? What is the, what do the, what are those things used for?
Uh, processing of the plant product and reducing smell.
So it's, it's odors and processing.
Right. And then the UV process to, to get better clean water, get better nitrogen out of the water into the, back into Long Island Sound.
Right. And this digester, now we've talked a lot about digesters in the last few months. This current one, the one that you guys are saying, hey, clean again. Or, you know, th- this is the second one that needs to be cleaned. Talk a little bit about the state of that one, how, when's the last time that was cleaned and stuff like that?
I don't have that information, Tom, but Nancy's not wrong with the digester in that there are engineering firms that tell you, you never have to clean the digester. So, so that, that is a decision that will be made operationally. I mean, it's in the budget. If it wasn't in the budget because we know about it and it came up that it had to be cleaned, we'd pay it out of our fund. It's the same fungible cash.
What I was gonna, and, and you just hit on something, what I was gonna say. This is the same fund that we're talking about that we know based on an analysis that you helped prepare that in a few years, there's not enough money in it, correct?
That's right. When we look at the capital projects and what we want to do in 2029, staying on the same course, basically we're staying on modest increases, we would have used up the 15 million that's now currently in the fund.
So i- if we were to consider everything else other than the the department materials that you referred to that have all gone up in cost. If we were to consider the rest of them basically contractual, really the item we're talking about here is the digester that's really a i- i- it's a optional item at this point, which requires further review. Is that fair to say?
That would be the discretionary item that
Discretionary. Thank you.
That I would consider up for discussion.
So if, if I were to, Nancy, just thinking, trying to get you comfort and understanding where you are and keeping this moving forward, right? With the expectation and the understanding that the report from the auditors have to come back through our body, through the Board of Finance, maybe through the RTM, I don't know, and certainly part of the WPCA. An option here would be not to reduce the budget by the cost of the digester, but to actually budget it within that fund balance as an addition to the fund balance. So, so Frank, take your seven fifty, right? And if the number's three fifty, make the seven fifty one point one. Leave the bottom line number the same because we're going to need that fund balance anyway. And then through working in this operational audit, Joe, as well as working, you know, with, with the outside consultants relative to, does this digester need to be cleaned? Right? You can pull it out of the fund balance should you need it, whether it be by transfer in, you know, the June timeframe with the Board of Finance or what have you, or whether it be by approval to utilize your fund balance to clean it. Does that work for you, Joe? Does that work?
Well, it's six and one half a dozen of the other. You're just, I'm going to pay it out of my fund if we're going to do it.
Right. But it gives Nancy, but, but what it does is it makes, it gives an extra layer of approval.
Exactly.
It actually doesn't because all you're doing is moving it to an authorized appropriation of the million one.
Of the million one, but in order to transfer between the two, you've got to come back through the bodies.
That is correct. We'd have to come back to the bodies.
Right. So it does. So there is that extra level.
Processing wise, it does make a difference.
That's right. That's all I'm saying, Joe. It puts them. Yeah.
I appreciate that. I just think again, unfettered access, not, it's not unfettered. I get that it's a finite amount. I just, an additional check and balance right now when we know that things are precarious, makes me feel better. And I appreciate, you know, Tom, you working with me to try and find a solution where I'm more comfortable. Because I want to get to a place where, you know, I feel good about that, but you're.
If you make that motion, I'll support that motion to, to transfer those funds from one to the other. And that way you, you have that extra level of oversight. And Frank, that's not a big deal for you in this budget and it leaves the budget whole.
Um, and, and by the way, I take great comfort in the fact that Joe, as vice chair and, and Mark Ellison as chair voted to support this, you know, they have financial backgrounds. They've been with this commission for a long time. And so, you know, that's what gave me comfort around the table. It was having space in between then and now that I just had some room to think, but I, I think giving that extra layer of protection gets me to a place where I am more comfortable. Can you, sorry, help me with the language. It's transferring.
Okay, transferring out of account fifty four, three, ten, three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and adding to account fifty nine, five hundred three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, bringing its total to 1.109.
1.109.
Those are the two adjustments. The digester's in Frank for three seventy five.
Right. And, and by the way, Nancy, so just so that you're aware and maybe makes you feel better. When I was back on the Board of Finance, we had similar issues back in the day. It was the IT department and we did exactly the same thing. We moved the funds to a, a different account so that once the account, once the department got sorted out, we could give them authorization back to, to, for that funding. So.
And, and thank you, thank you for that. And thank you, Joe, for clarifying the language. Joe, I would love to ask you one other question about the supplies because my understanding is when, and thank you for underscoring, you know, the engineering firms and the way that works. And, and again, maybe perhaps as part of the audit, we will learn more about what the recommendation is or for this particular digester. But the chemicals, my understanding is that one, we had some problems with some of the chemicals, but two, with it being cleaned, you would think you wouldn't necessarily need those supplies, at least for now, am I not? Because we're undergoing that, that maintenance right now.
Nancy, the chemicals are not for the digester. The chemicals will go to the the process after the digester. And I'm looking at the UV, UV is completely separate, which is part of clean water. It's at the end of the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the methanol, I don't know where they use it, so I can't answer the question. But it's, it's a combination of these chemicals. We will use them at the pump stations because we're starting to receive complaints at the seven pump stations of, of smell. And, and the, I mean, I'm just looking at what the former
Chemicalist.
What the superintendent put in. The polymers are up 76%. These, these chemicals are through the roof as far as costs. It's incredible.
You know, we're seeing the supply increase across all the departments and, and listen, nobody wants to, like when they need to have chemicals, nobody wants to, you know, if things are smelling bad, I certainly don't want to get in the way of their ability to, to use appropriate materials. All right. So I'm going to make a motion to transfer out of account five, four, three, one, zero, three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and add it into account, add, add three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars into account five ninety five zero zero, bringing that balance to 1.109 million dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So open to such discussion on the item. I personally feel that it's a mistake. We just had an experience with a digester that wasn't cleaned. And to me, it makes sense. It has nothing to do with operational audits or anything else. We have a dig, we have two digesters. One just broke because it wasn't properly maintained. And so it just makes good common sense to maintain the digester, to put money in the budget, to do preventative maintenance and cleaning. I, I, I mean, I honestly, I don't know how that, I, I don't know how that makes anybody feel more comfortable. I mean, I, I was very uncomfortable. Um, and I can tell you right now, it was me that those residents were asking questions to and our health department and everybody else. And so you know, why wasn't this done? Why wasn't this maintained? Why did this happen? And so, I, I mean, listen, I just, I just don't see. so I, I mean, listen, I just, I just don't see the reasoning behind it. It just doesn't make sense to me.
And I would push back because it's my understanding that it wasn't because of, and, and Ms. Joe, if you could clarify this, I really understood that it was not necessarily a maintenance issue and um it was a pressure issue and that it would not have necessarily been avoided had it been maintained. There was something else going on. So and again, I go back to this idea that everybody acted very quickly once the problem occurred, you know, to get these funds. It's just an extra layer of again, protection in terms of the financial uh check and balance when right now there isn't a captain of the ship on the town side that the superintendent reports to. It's just an extra layer at a time when there's a lot of uncertainty in that department. And um again, to have departments have to act quickly, you know, the Board of Finance acted very quickly. Whoever had to vote on it acted very quickly. We acted very quickly. Um, the WPCA acted very quickly, so I don't think that there would be a stopgap. And again, it wasn't because of negligence.
We all acted very quickly, but my understanding, and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, that the time it's been taking to actually repair it was because of the amount of sludge that was in it. And it was so incredibly filthy and dirty that the sludge was preventing and all the time it took to get actually it cleaned so they could identify the problem and to repair it. I'm saying, do good preventative maintenance on your equipment so that you don't have problems like this where, you know, I don't live near it. Nancy, you don't. Tom doesn't. But a lot of people do. And they were extraordinarily inconvenienced. Extraordinarily. You read some of those emails. People stand, couldn't even stand on the bus stop. Children were choking. The air was so horrifying. I mean, I don't want to take a chance with that. It just doesn't, I, I don't get that. I mean, regardless, if we need an audit for operations, it's nothing to do with our, so for example, if the auditor comes in and does a whole look at the whole WPCA and for, for some, you know, chance says, oh, you know what? That digester hasn't been cleaned in twenty years or more, doesn't really need to be cleaned or maintained. Oh, great. Well, then we can just put the, you know, three seventy-five into fund balance or it can roll over into surplus. I mean, I, I just, I don't know. I, I I, I just don't get it really.
I, I think what we have here though, okay, we have a situation where everybody's kind of retreated to their corners on this. Um, and, and I don't think anybody here on this board wants to see a digester go down again. Okay? Now, what I'm going by is Nancy's got a very real concern over the management, given some of what she's seen as our representative on that board. I can agree with her. I can disagree with her, whatever it is. I'm trying to get her actually comfortable. Okay, so that she feels that she can support this. And I have seen this done before when I was in a similar situation, feeling uncomfortable about departmental management for one reason or another. So that's, that's my take on it. Now, when I started, we started talking about the digester. I agree with you in that preventative maintenance is key and I don't want to uh not do preventative maintenance, which is why I argued for not cutting this from a budget, but just transferring it over to fund balance so that it can be utilized as appropriate because the funds will be sitting there. Now, I did that after Mr. DeVanzo pointed out that the commission isn't sold on the fact that this um digester needs to be cleaned at the present time. They've got to review it. They've got to work with a consultant and then they've got to decide. So one way or the other, if they need the funds, the funds are available within the departmental budget to use and to give Nancy some peace of mind that there's an extra layer of uh eyes on this, given the fact that we, there are some stated management concerns, both by the administration and other town bodies, based on some of the financials recently. So I, I don't think they're mutually exclusive points of view. And I don't think anybody's trying to say that the digester shouldn't be done if the commission who's tasked with this comes back working with their experts and says it should. That's where I'm coming out on it. That's all.
And you're suggesting that the money would be transferred into back instead of being incorporated into the operating budget?
It is in the operating budget. It's just not in that line item.
So we would put it in fund balance.
We would leave it in fund balances soon as the commission said, hey, we worked with our advisors and they said we need to do it. Boom, we just move it right over. The funds are there.
It, there's the motion on the table.
Excuse me, Nancy, just for one minute. Frank, is that accurate?
Yeah, it's still, I, it, it's still going to be um in the budget. So they would just, you would have to, the, the process would have to go through to transfer the money from the fund balance appro- appropriation of fund balance to the um can uh maintenance and repair of, of equipment.
So is that the motion that's on the table now for to move it from that, that line to the other line?
Exactly. Leave, leaving the budget is whole.
Is that the motion, Nancy, that you made?
It is the motion and I gave accounts thanks to Joe and Tom. I appreciate rather than you being um defensive, really trying to help us as a body see our way through to, to making the entirety of the body comfortable. Um, Joe, it looked like you were trying to speak to correct, maybe to correct something that was said earlier or perhaps to reaffirm, but it was around the time that the first select woman was talking about um the breaking down of, of the first digester.
Well, I was just going to uh suggest that uh if we convene and get the engineers to tell us that that second digester needs to be cleaned, as soon as we get the first digester back online uh repaired, we can go right to it. And if we do it in this fiscal year, it would come out of our fund balance because it wasn't covered in the budget. So it's six of one, half a dozen of the other the way it's being discussed.
Yeah, and, and yet for me.
I just want to bring the board back to, um, if we could just bring the board back. It is late and people um are. So if you have a motion on the table to transfer from one line to the other, so it'll essentially be in the fund balance and there's a second on that motion. And I, now that I've, it's been explained to me, I understand that we still have an option to be able to repair it. I mean, uh, preventative maintenance on it. I'm really comfortable with that as long as that's um, and that's great. And that's a great motion. So um, we have a, we have a motion in a second. Um, so I'm ready to, to vote in favor if everybody would wants to move forward with that item. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So are we still, Frank, we're at the same uh number, correct, that we had? Let me go look.
Yeah, the bottom line, bottom line hasn't changed.
Okay, so do we go back? So this is an amended motion, but it's the same motion that's on the agenda. I'm looking at it on my phone, so I can't hurt, it's hard to read it. Um.
You're absolutely correct, Brenda.
Okay, so that's the same motion. Do we have to re-motion it or?
No.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Um, and it's been modified. Okay, so we're back to the main motion.
And what I would like to say is, again, I appreciate you, Tom, getting us to a place where I'm comfortable because I think just that additional check and balance as symbolic as it may be, because, I mean, it's not symbolic. It is a real check and balance. It's just an opportunity um for us to feel that that's money that's a little bit safeguarded in this, in a time when it just feels precarious. So thank you for that. And I don't have anything further to say.
Very good. All right. So we um, I'll, I'll go back to the main motion. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Get out.